Special call meeting to order. We do have a forum so we can conduct the business of the city. At this time, I want to ask Councilwoman Jackson, if you'd be so kind, to give us an introduction.
Thank you, Lord God. Just thank you now for your blessings, for your grace, for your mercy, for your little kindness, Lord God. We thank you for loving us and inspiring us, Lord God. We thank you that we can cry out our butthole. Lord God, we thank you because we have breathed in our bodies. You said, "Let everything that has breath be present to the Lord." And so this afternoon, we say thank you for being our Lord and Savior, for being our Redeemer. Lord God, we thank you for being our healer and our protector. Lord God, we ask that you would abide in this meeting, abide in us. Let us do only what you have prepared for us to do that is purposeful and productive in the support to your will. In Jesus' precious name we pray.
Amen. I'll tell you, we have a lot of power, I think.
Madam Clerk, roll over. Ms. President Booley.
President.
Councilwoman Bowlin.
President.
Councilwoman Shaw.
Here.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Present.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Present.
We have multitasking today.
Councilwoman Johnson. Councilwoman Youngblood. Councilwoman Randolph. And Councilwoman Benjamin.
Before we approve the agenda, I think Councilwoman Shaw you said.
Mr. President, I would like to add, the clerk reminded me that although we approved the name change of Cole Street to recognize the honor of the first African-American president, Ernest A. Tate, she reminded me that we did not take any action on the waiving of a thousand-dollar fee. I think there was a consensus that we were waiving and it would be paid out on our board stakes because we don't acquire two-street sites. So I would like for the Council to record that they waived the thousand-dollar fee with the cost being taken out of the money of all these.
How much? It usually was about a thousand dollars?
About a thousand dollars. But, Mr. President, that thousand dollars was for those long-hanged streets that were probably fifteen, twenty-sand?
So we're looking at about two?
Two sand.
We're looking at five hundred maybe?
Maybe less.
At cost.
At cost. At cost.
Science World.
Not to exceed a thousand.
That costs a lot. Okay. Any other additions?
I do have a concern about the riverfront. I'm sorry, Ms. James.
Go ahead.
I do have a concern about the riverfront, whether or not we put a fence around that thing yet or not. Make sure that it's properly fenced off with a chain link fence because obviously the reports on the newspaper, everything online, people are gonna start going down there and looking at it, and it's gonna be the perfect recipe for disaster.
It is scary.
Huh?
It is scary.
Can't nobody go down there if it's not safe for you?
Is it fenced off?
No, it was supposed to be.
It wasn't fenced off at the end, but there was three guys that were working. I don't know what contract they were working on. But when I got down there, I couldn't recall exactly where their plates were and they took them and showed me. And I think one of the three guys just seen it for the first time. He said, "Maybe we can rope this thing off." I'm thinking, "We need to rope it off."
Well, I think that my concern is, given the citizen's propensity to not look at ropes, to not abide by orange fencing, that we need to do something more profound to ensure our liabilities are diminished as much as possible because people are gonna go down there. And those enterprising individuals that wanna jump in there and see if they can find some artifact, you know, while they may be taking their own life in their own hands, the liability strictly falls on us. And so that worries me greatly because it is the destination. You see people talking about it online. And it worries me that that's as much traffic as can get built down there.
Sure, they jump in and they come out.
No, that's right.
They're jumping in and taking a one-way trip to here.
Yes, right. Taking a one-way trip to the river, the hard way.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes, I am very concerned about something dealing with the downtown redevelopment question I asked. And I was following up. The reason why I'm concerned is some of the meetings with that downtown with Mrs. Maxwell. And I was told that with that downtown redevelopment, that the councils, people that serve on those boards that have been there, their time had been way up ever since. And, well, we are new councils, so I had to redo, went to do some research on that ground house back then. Who appointed these people on those boards? And I was told that the council appointed these people. And I asked Ms. Ivory to pull something up because we have people that are serving on these boards. And they're saying that the time has been paid.
Well, I talked to Turner Madison today, and I asked him to get a copy of all board appointments so we can look at it and move forward from there. Because I know Turner, now, from time to time periodically, we should ask him to get a copy of all the boards that we appoint, the mayor and the council. And once he brings back us a copy of all the boards, not just for the summer redevelopment authority, but also personnel and other boards like that. So I asked him to go ahead and get that information, and then essentially get it to us hopefully that we can go there and see where we need to go from there. But from my understanding, that SRA, I know it came into the inception with Mayor Evans back in '08.
Yeah, 2002.
I think it was '08. I thought it was '08.
It was 2002.
Before that, they did the hotel.
Okay, because I know, well, when he came in '08, from my understanding, I remember he made some recommendations for that downtown association. It wasn't SRA then, it was Downtown Association.
That was the Main Street.
Yeah, yeah, it was the Main Street. Then, I think the last person that we appointed was Billy Young.
Yes.
Yep.
I think that's the last person that we appointed. And I think the mayor brought forth that recommendation. I think Evans was gonna bring it forth, but I guess he just delayed it until Darryl Milton. And then the mayor brought before the council, then the council voted to put him on there.
So can you tell me what the year that was that the council voted?
2016.
2016. At that time, who wasn't on there to do that vote?
It was 2017. It became the first year we were on the board.
First year.
First year.
I believe it was.
It was first year. It was 2016.
And they asked us to keep the role the same when it came up again later because they were either in the process of hiring an executive director or they had issues with the executive director. And they asked me to keep the crew the same until they weathered the executive director storm. And since they had the same group of people that had the same knowledge, they said they wouldn't do people on there and have to get back to zero, if I remember correctly.
That's correct.
So.
So that's why I asked for a whole.
I was gonna say, your point is exactly. They've been up for some time, they've gotten through that weather storm.
Yeah, because I already asked you, and I told him I didn't know when they were appointed to the vote. So by being the new councilperson, I asked Ms. Ivory to let me pull something up from the time I proceeded.
I think it would be part of the business for this whole council that we get all the boards and look at their appointments, you know, appointment.
We did. You're right.
And their need. I mean, because there's, you know, again, a question of need in some cases. We really need them out there doing this. Not them specifically, but, you know, the groups we appointing.
And my main concern is their personnel.
Yeah.
That's the main concern.
Yes. Well, we need to know who appointed all of them.
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's right. That's why.
Who appointed? Who appointed these people? Who appointed?
And then, once you get the whole list compiled, then you'll be able to see through the mayor's appointment and through the council's appointment. So it's a lot of appointments that we have to make. All right?
One more thing. And it's very important to the citizens. This is 2020, y'all. And I'm speaking in my behalf as a representative. I am burnt out of this game plan when we are supposed to take care of this city. I have major problems. It is not my duty to be running to the mayor's office trying to figure out how I'm gonna get my work orders done. It is his duty to do as day-to-day operation. We have a secretary up here that we call to, this body voted on. And due to the respect of these elector officials up here, I don't take our, one council said, or it was told to them like this, but I'm like this. Our citizens are looking for us to serve them as we're supposed to when they got work orders. I did a work order last week, and it's a major problem. And our secretary filled the work order out and took it downstairs. Okay, it was placed back. I'm not playing games. It's 2020. It was placed back into my box with her copy. But I got to, we got to serve the citizen. I'm not for nobody. It's about doing what's right. And I'm expecting that we get to the end of this because we have to move, we have to do what we have to do for the city itself. I'm not gonna let, keep doing work orders, and we're not getting done by day-to-day. The mayor's brought back in people for Public Work Department and other departments. It's time for us to do what we're supposed to do, serve the citizen. That's his job, day-to-day operation. They are not supposed to be punished because of him not wanting to cooperate with our sector. We need to know exactly what we need to move forward with this. I got work to do.
Can I make a suggestion? Although the council has not been officially informed that administrative assistant has not been hired by the mayor and his house and the clerk's office, I found out last week when Ms. Ivory told me, when Ms. Harrison introduced me to a strange person that was in her office. She said, "This is Ms. Harrison. She is the council administrative assistant housed in my office to help and assist me as well as take care of the functions of the council." But what I found out is that since the work orders are not being responded to by Mr. Ellison submitted, I decided to submit a work order by Ms. Ellison and the same work order to Ms. Harrison. Hopefully that we can get some work done that we see these in our boards. We shouldn't have to do this.
I'm not gonna do it.
We really shouldn't have to submit two work orders. But since the mayor is not recognized, and it's clearly he's not recognizing any work orders that is submitted by Ms. Ellison. At the same time, and I may be wrong, you correct me for wrong, am I correct?
Well.
I'm good.
Go ahead. Okay. But to my knowledge, he is not acknowledging any work orders by any of us that is submitted by Ms. Ellison. I don't know if he's gonna respond to the same work order that was submitted some of the times by Ms. Ellison and Ms. Harrison. Whether or not it's gonna be worked upon. So I think we're gonna stand still here.
I put this by sansay to Mary, sansay to Martha. It's a little semantic. The work still needs to be done. I don't care if the poke, it's a poke breaker here to give it to them. It still needs to be done. It's gonna be a roadverse. What's the first thing he always tell us? It never happened because I never received them right. And that's the standard I'm gonna take from there. All right, Miss President.
And I have went to the actual one above and behind and made his door billboard. I put him on the door with tape, and I slide it under his door so to make sure that I'm making sure that he's getting. Now, that's okay if he wants to, you know, go through somebody else and do it that way. But what he is showing is that it's a clear line of retaliation is what he's showing. I can accept it from this female, but I can't accept it from that female. You don't have to ever like her. Respect me and do your job. Because him not liking me is not hurting me. It's hurting the citizens. You send a work order request back. It's just showing how childish you are. So you can acknowledge Ms. Harrison's, but you got a thin line right there that you just don't cross, which is retaliation.
I'm not saying he, to his point, he has not acknowledged it to yours.
Not yet, but we'll see once if he does do it, I mean, which is great because it actually needs to be done. But then we'll know, you know, I'm gonna constantly submit them. If you all send them to me and say submit them, I'm gonna do the job that you all hired me to do.
Okay. Anything else on this?
Contractor.
And he, don't treat one contractor like that. Treat them all.
Universal.
Mm-hmm. So, but it's okay.
All right. We have five items to be considered for the business of life. At this time, the chairman entertained a motion to approve the agenda with the added items of board lists at the cost of the science and also referred to all. Councilwoman, any other? That was just part of the discussion.
Yeah, and I agree. It's very important that we do this because this is 2020. And, you know, people, our constituents are looking for us to do better.
Well, let me tell you something. If they're putting everything on us, if they're not getting service that they pay taxes for, and they see us up here doing everything that we can do, and it's a roadblock, they're gonna come and squeeze in the game also. Do we have a motion? Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Shaw. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Bowlin, roll over. The approval of the agenda.
Council President Booley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Maya Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin. Councilwoman Randolph. Councilwoman Shaw.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Okay, stated before, we do have a forum. This night, number one is the Bird School. I did the secret call from Dr. Williams this afternoon. And she would have loved to have been here, but she's out of town at a conference. And then any other questions that we may have, any further questions, if she would be willing to work coming forward, council along with her staff, to answer any questions as it relates to the Bird School and also to, uh, Councilwoman.
Okay. I did also speak with Dr. Williams and Mr. Peterson. Dr. Williams did relate that she did not want Mr. Peterson to speak, that she wanted to make sure that she was here. And so, but they provided us with everything that I asked for in the summary of the report as we discussed on last Wednesday in the meeting. If you take a look at their school board meeting dated 6/6/2019, if you look at page three, I think it is. One, two, three. Or if you go back and forth to six. But you see, resolution converting property back to the city of Selma. It was approved. Motion made by Dr. Tiger Miles. Motion seconded by Mrs. Phyllis House. House, it was a unanimous vote. The resolution is also attached. This is all the information that I requested of them. And also, there's a letter dated to our Honorable Mayor Milton for June 7, which I've never received a copy of, and that I've asked for several times a copy of the resolution. Meeting minutes in, ending converting that back. So we got that in hand, and maybe over thereafter, June 7, the mayor was notified that this would actually close as a school as of June the 30th. In the meantime, they've been transitioning, moving their property from the school. And last Wednesday, I was able to go to the meeting that our president referenced at our Tuesday, Monday night meeting and Tuesday night meeting. And so I turned those keys in at about 11:40 on Wednesday morning to our perks office. There were three boxes above those of keys. And I turned all of those back in and a copy of the deed with them. What I asked for Mr. Peterson to do was kinda give us a summary of where we are. When I walked through the building with them Wednesday morning, they actually had cell phone out there saying that they were about to cut off the burglary system. And I asked, "Please, please don't do that because we haven't been able to transfer things." I did speak to Ms. Wayne, and she said that a meeting wasn't necessary to transfer things, but I know there's a law that we need to get on record regarding this property and regarding the interest in this property. And so I did request of the president to have this meeting. So if you look at the utility companies and the vendors, they've supplied us with everyone that they're utilizing so we can go ahead and transfer it. And I guess we can make a motion today to determine that transfer date. If it's going to be the fifth or the seventh.
What they did, I talked to her, they were very brief. They would allow, stay on, everything stayed on for two additional weeks.
Two additional weeks. Yes, she did tell me that even though they were out there last week, that he had made her aware that we would not cut them off until we actually were able to have a meeting because she was asking us not to have a meeting today. But I'd say it's an hour before our prepared meeting. And they already had all of this prepared. She just wasn't able to be here, but she has excellent staff and team members. And so they had already had all this prepared for us. So if you look at the electricity, of course, it's Alabama Power Gas, it's fire, Selma Water Works, phone services, AT&amp;T, internet spectrum. And I guess we would need to determine whether we would need some of these, maybe our personal lawn. We may need to continue to have the internet services. But that was one of the things, their fire alarm is with a different company. It's Harris Security. So we definitely need to have a fire system ongoing and need to be notified in case something happened. And of course, Selma Pest Control. Additionally, they have, if you look on the next page, they received a quote from Latham and Associates regarding the renovation that would be needed if they were going to bring the building up to code to make it a school, make it a school. It will be approximately four million dollars. Of course, we have some interest from buyers, and I do have a quote here for an appraisal. And so we're not looking to spend four million dollars, but there are gonna be some things that we're going to need to do to this building to ensure it doesn't remain in this dilapidated state if we're not selling it. If you look at the third page, there's a breakdown of one through seven. All of the classrooms on the McLeod street wing of the school are in good conditions. Room four and five have a single restroom in each. Rooms four and five. The classroom ring on the furnace side of the campus need a complete roof replacement. Room six has a bad leak. Rooms one, two, and three, one, two, three, and five have small leaks. Room four and eight are in better condition than the rest. There are no visible leaks in these two rooms. I would tell you, when I walked through last week, I walked through about two of the rooms. I guess about 10 minutes each. So after about 20 minutes, my eyes were so red that I was crying. My nose was burning. I couldn't stand it. So I didn't walk through all of them. I could not breathe in those rooms. So there's a whole line, and they could have been because they're so closed up. But there's a lot of mold and things going on in these rooms. Number three, the main building has rooms that are leaking. Rooms nine, 14, 15. The library in the corner of hallway across from room 13, and the boys' restrooms all leak. Water's getting into the plastering walls of the library in room 15. The main building is in need of roof repair and replacement. Now, some members have boys' frustration as to why they returned the building to us as such as dilapidated state, and why wouldn't they give us something toward the renovation of these buildings? And those are questions that we may want to put them back on the agenda to answer. The hallway floor between rooms nine and 10, and also the cafeteria, is unstable. The floor in the hallway in front of the library has also dropped. The wheelchair lift outside of the main building on the furnace side of the campus is in disrepair. The license room 13 on the main building doesn't work due to score damage. If you look at the page behind it, I asked for an analysis of the utilities during the time that it was in, why they haven't been utilized. So if you look at Alabama McLeod, even though there are months that they haven't been utilized, they're still large. They're still a large building in July. And school is over with. Like, in the May in July, they had a $1,020 bill. I don't know how many lights they keep on over there, how many we're going to keep on, but I know that those things are not budgeted. We don't currently have bird school in our budget. And so those are things that we're going to need to look at and have a line item for bird school. Our new St. James Hotel currently. So, but in December, it was $737. In January, it was $700. So I don't know if they've cut off most of the lights, but we have several months, like in September, it was $3,000. The largest one was in July, $4,000. And so that's something that we need to look at. The water bill has been consistent each month, even though it's not utilizing, no one is in the building, but they were paying about $182.51 since July. Even through January, no one's in the building. So $182, we need to look at that. Spire, they said that they had overpaid Spire at times early, and so they got a rebate. And so they got a couple of months in June, July, August, that the bill was 60 to $80. But in October, November, December, and January, they were all over $1,000. In December, the bill was $2,300 for the heat. And that's another thing. We have all those keys. We may need to get in that building because when I was in there the other day, the heat was on. And we may need to keep it on, of course, because there needs to be some heat in the building, of course, if we're not utilizing it. But to the tune of $2,300 for a vacant building, I don't know. So these are all things that I wanted to bring before the council. I didn't want to look at these myself. And then they gave us a floor painting plan of the school. I didn't want to have this information and not have the entire council with this same information be able to make sound decisions regarding this building. So I guess our first order of meetings is to make a motion to take the building or accept the building. Would that be in order, Mr. President?
I agree. I think when you own buildings, it reverts back to the city anyway, unless you just wanna make, let me, it reverts back to the city.
Well, it is reverted back to us in June. But we hadn't paid a bill over since June. We hadn't been in the building. We hadn't had the keys in the building. So I guess it would be a formality, but I would like to see that we accept this building back and put a transfer date because the utilities.
Two weeks, whatever. Two weeks. What's two weeks for today?
What's the disadvantage of having all the utilities gone? What's the disadvantage of having all the utilities gone?
Eat it up. The building will eat itself alive. What's the benefit of that?
I think that ain't dropping.
Yeah. Seventeen? Yeah, February 17.
So that was a two-week date that she gave, or something else, I think you mentioned in your presentation?
No, two weeks. I talked to her today.
Okay, I'm sorry.
She said she would hold it in.
Oh, every day's off, no, two weeks.
That was, that's the conversation today, when I was out there Wednesday, cell phone was dead.
Right.
And I said, "Please don't." I was out there in the rain going through the building. And I asked Ms. Peterson, "Please don't cut it off." Cell phone is here now to cut the alarm system off. "Please don't." And that's why I asked for this special call meeting so we can address these matters. That she told me today, I spoke to her as well, that she was willing to wait two weeks. She didn't know someone was out last week.
Councilwoman. Yeah.
Well, there's a pretty steep utility deals. You know, these bills are pretty steep. Councilwoman Jackson, do we know, are there any plans for the building?
I know that we have, are you saying with the city or any interested buyers?
Both. I mean, what are the plans, the hopes, the possibilities, the sensibilities?
I have received an email from a real estate agent that she's showing to five different people. I've received calls of interest from two individuals that is really concerning. Mr. Spencer being the other one, he was here last week. And Mr. Jim Lewis, the owner of the St. James being the other.
Okay. I know that Jim's been interested for quite some time.
Quite some time, yes, sir.
Jim was interested in the hotel for quite some time. I do never let him say this. I was the biggest cheerleader for the St. James. I did not, you know, I popped tooth and nail to keep it open for all the reasons that you do wanna keep something open. And it was a drag. I said, you know, it cost us a lot. I don't know, given the same set of circumstances, what I'd do. You know, if I had to go back and do it all over, I don't know what I would do. But having said that, I do know it cost an awful lot. My suggestion would be to, you know, get your local community together and have a set time that we will give this, you know, for, to say, we will, a month, six weeks, or whatever. And if, you know, if people haven't expressed an interest, had a meaningful offer, then we will need to mothball it. You know what that means? Cut the utilities to a bare minimum, because we do have to have a mom, especially building design. But, and you know what mothball means, you know, just to, because that's what we should have done with the hotel. And I was not averse to that. There were some people that didn't want to have it up and running. We should not have done that as long as we did. But we should have mothballed the hotel a long time ago. But we should have mothballed the hotel a long time ago. But I certainly wish to learn from my mistake on that.
And I miss my interest today because I've received several calls and several emails today about the building. And we're not in a position, the city of Selva, I don't believe, to take on and take over this building. And so I think it would be feasible in our best interest to entertain someone that's willing to renovate and do something that would enhance the community and neighborhood and not let it dilapidate it. That's what the interest from the very beginning, from last year when we heard that they may be closing it till they in fact closed it. Those are the calls that I received. Do not let another dilapidated building be in our neighborhood. And so do something with it. And so I've already contacted someone here locally about doing an appraisal on the building.
He's good.
And he's only charging us $300.
That is a steal. That's a steal.
No steal. I contacted four, four different inspectors, but I haven't received a call back from anyone.
And if I can say this too, it's one of the things that our mayor did right that I was just horrified at first, but what he did right, and I would recommend if we need to go this route in just a few weeks, if we haven't had a meaningful offer from any of these people looking at it. It doesn't look real good, but it's far better to have the boards in the windows than to have the vandalism. And it will happen. It will happen. Look at the Good Sound. Look at the.
Look at any buildings open.
Look at the Y and C A. And that would have happened to the St. James had Daria, had the mayor not done that. So I would recommend that. If that's just free advice, take it a little bit, but.
I think.
Yeah. I think that was a good thing.
I contacted both of them on Wednesday, made them aware. And I got a call today about the meeting today and I told them I'd let them know. So I, before I could entertain or ask for about appraisal, because I know I can't do anything without the vote of the council. And I wanted to have on record that we actually transferring this back because it's been out since June 30th. We just had to keep the head keys last week, which was what, the thirtieth, forty ninth?
Also too, I think once we get that appraisal amount, I had wanted that, who may be interested again. He assured me he might use no USDA money. He gonna pay the full amount for what the appraisal is for.
Okay. You know, I'm really, and I'm just one vote, I'm willing to entertain anyone that can pay the full amount, but I don't want you to pay the full amount and mix this up for the next five years. I want a full amount and a plan to have this building just like we did with the St. James for a year or higher.
Yeah. He has plans also. He rebuild homes and.
Who is this?
I just, one guy.
Oh, okay.
He has over hundred houses and he do all his maintenance work. And he have people on board that can help him renovate the building.
Amen. Well, let me ask you all this. Do you want me to proceed with inspection? Now, the inspection is totally different. And I asked the school system if they, what I've gotten is a reasonable price for inspection is anywhere from a thousand to five hundred thousand. I don't know if that's reasonable. The four inspectors that I've called have not called me back. And so. But the city school system, I asked if they had inspection reports. They said, no, they have their architects who go out and then just provide it for this.
Wouldn't a buyer get an inspection? Doesn't a buyer customer get an inspection?
I don't doubt it, but.
I think a buyer gets an inspection. I think that we might be spending money we don't have. That's just a suggestion.
And if we get a guy by, I know the appraisal is going to be what we should do, but I was looking at it. Just in case we were in this for the long run, we needed to know what was wrong with our building more and what it would take for us to get it back. But I guess this four million dollars gives us a clue.
I do think it's worth it. Nothing else to be cut off. There may be a hard time.
Absolutely. We're in the living room. Yeah, good, good, you know, good situation.
I'm gonna put a motion on the floor after all of that.
The water doesn't come, just make sure the hot water heaters and everything else that get fed gets cut down, taken off, just don't burn up. It'll make the flat burn up.
Building not being maintained, sure there's hard fees coming on. They take precautions. It helps out over there not to take precautions.
Okay. So I want to put a motion on the floor that we accept this bird school back in our possession, that we change all utilities by February seventeenth into the city of Selva, if names in, I'm going to second motion.
Do you want to add services to that since the utilities, I don't know if the alarm system is considered an utility?
All services, this is fairly secure. I guess we need to do a second motion because we're gonna have to cut off some.
Right.
Let's take that as our admission and transfer because then we have a second motion.
Roll call to receive our property back into our hands. Roll call.
Council President Bullock. Councilman Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin. Councilman Randolph. Councilwoman LaShaw.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Okay. Our motion passed.
The second motion would be that we consider which utilities that we keep on and which utilities that we turn off. And there's also, there's one that we, several waterworks that we want to cut off. Is there anything yet? Garbage service. We shouldn't have any garbage. So we should cut that off, right? Is continued garbage? No? Tell me, for garbage?
You don't have so much garbage.
No, there's garbage over there that if we don't, if we don't get it, it just gonna pile up and then you have to somebody go ahead and deal with it.
How much did they need to put down? How much they pay for the garbage?
Yeah, we'll get the bounds on.
I thought we're not paying because if it reverts back to us. It's not back to us, I know, but it's just shopping at the school, right?
They don't want us getting too into it.
Okay.
And I guess we need to determine if Selva needs the internet for their, for their, I need to make my burglar system. I don't know. So if they need internet for their burglar system, then we need to keep it on.
Are you, is their intentions of getting the alarm system transferred over to that that the city currently utilizes or?
Yeah, we can do that and disconnect the people.
Any, like just urgent repairs, if there are any? We have a line item for building repair and maintenance of public building that does, that now that it's back to being our building, that line item can cover any urgent repairs. Just FYI.
Okay. All right. So we can, we can use our own fire alarm system, our own burglar alarm system and she can transfer that. We can stop them with pest control?
We have pest control as well.
No, they can transfer in the industry.
They can transfer up on the alarm.
And the only thing we change out is water, several waterworks. We stop.
Because even if they come up, revert back to the city, up on the several waterworks, we get free water.
Okay.
Well, but what about, are the pipes sort of freezing burst and stuff?
Yeah, the water needs to be cut off and the pipes drain.
And we can get our business district to go ahead and make sure which comes on right. Oh, yeah.
Mr. Lewis.
Yeah, but he's not here.
Yeah, he is.
Okay.
You need a city.
All right. So that's.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is to revert everything back by the seventeenth into the city's property and utility vendors that they currently use and to ensure that the water is cut off and the pipes are drained.
Okay. Have motion on the floor. We have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Jackson. Second by Councilwoman LaShaw. Any further discussion, questions? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Council President Bullock.
Yes.
Councilman Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin. Councilman Randolph. Councilwoman LaShaw.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
My final item is I would like to put a motion on the floor to allow me to move forward with the appraisal for $350 for bird school by Carl G. Allen, certified appraiser owner, in action appraisal.
Second.
Motion on the floor for new board. Motion by Councilwoman Jackson. Second, Councilwoman Youngblood. Any further discussion?
Is that appraisal, you know?
Yes, sir. Right on, how about that?
All right. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Council President Bullock.
Yes.
Councilman Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin. Councilman Randolph. Councilwoman LaShaw.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
All right. Motion passed. That's it? Okay. Next we have contracts. I know there's two contracts that, one of them was requested by Chief Fuller. He wanted to bring Chief Green back for about three months to help, to help with some vandalism. Also with the, we received, there's some projects that we need to finalize. The contract's supposed to have came in today. He emailed it, but I have received it from Major Madison and I'll just wait until we get the contract. Hopefully we'll have it by Tuesday. But just like the recreational contract and also the contract that it's been over a month. We've been playing tennis with that along with the recreational contract.
The recreational, right.
Yep. I mean, resolution, excuse me. So we're playing tennis with that for about the last one and a half. Venus and Serena, I guess. Playing, going back and forth. Carl couldn't beat them, so.
What's the cost of it?
I don't know. I'll have him find it. But I asked him to put it in. He's supposed to email it. And we have a couple of safety meetings tomorrow at five o'clock. We can discuss and move forward from there. Also, I put in front of you a email from Mr. Clifford Hunter. This is something that we've been doing routinely with partnership with the annual job fair. Each year, Councilwoman LaShaw is very familiar with it and they are in use of our convention center. They're asking for it for the third Wednesday in May, which is May twentieth, twenty twenty. And they're asking for it also for May twelfth, twenty twenty-one. In the past, we just voted for two years and. Oh, sorry. And Ms. President also helped some of our citizens with hope for gain for employment. And this has been a standard practice of partnership with the job task force of D H R and also Career League where they have over a hundred some employees coming out to, for anyone who would like to seek a job opportunity. And they're in use of our venue, which is the convention center. And it's the third week in May twenty twenty, May twentieth, twenty twenty, and May twelfth, twenty twenty-one. And I just want to put a motion on the floor that we wait at the convention center for this year and also May twelfth of next year. Yes.
I just wanted to ask one question. Have we contacted the real estate department to determine if this date for this year has been secured or not?
They have already. That's why I had to move it down to the third.
Okay. So this date is clear?
Yes.
Have Ms. President, we all are better. We go number.
Yeah. I guess I have a motion on the floor. That's it. Okay. It's been a long one. Okay, I made the motion. Have a second by Councilwoman LaShaw. Any further discussion? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Council President Bullock.
Yes.
Councilman Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin. Councilman Randolph. Councilwoman LaShaw.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Ms. Ellis, could you email Ms. Davis on tomorrow, letting her know that the council has approved both days for this year and next year?
May twentieth, twenty twenty, May twelfth, twenty-one.
Yes, ma'am. I think, honestly, it's the last, I'm not asking. Councilwoman LaShaw.
Yeah, Ms. President, if you call at our work session and at the council meeting, the council will freely change the name of Culver Street to Landlord Taylor Tate, who was the first African-American Polish chief manager in Selva. And his labor was silent tissue, supporting that endeavor because of his dedicated thirty-four years of service to the city. I think the council was wise to support that initiative. I ever, the waiver of a thousand dollars was not taken up, so I'm asking because it's only going to acquire two street signs. And that, the thousand dollars we waived and I would pay for that on all these.
Up to a thousand dollars. Like I said, it's not that cost, the cost value of the two signs. Because it's only, only two signs. If I'm not mistaken, council, I think it's only twenty-five people on the street and I think all twenty-five was in agreement of the, of the name of the street.
I certainly am.
Okay, we have motion on the floor, Councilwoman LaShaw. Second, Councilwoman Youngblood. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Council President Bullock.
Tate. Yes.
Councilman Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood.
War and two votes for Chief Tate. Yeah, I'll take the same.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Please let the record show that I did that vote for the mayor and so I'm going to abstain. Abstained by the next council meeting. I'm hopeful that my vote on both mayers can change it.
Councilwoman Benjamin. Councilman Randolph. Councilwoman LaShaw.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Okay.
Ms. President?
Yes, sir.
Also, I extended anybody to Chief Tate and Lord Ryan to come to our next council meeting, which will be next Tuesday, to give recognition for that service that you've given us. Ms. President, you indicated that proclamation will be restricted by you, right?
Yes, sir.
So Chief Tate is likely to be here, so we will do honors for him on that day.
Thank you, Councilman. All right. Last best as I am, Councilman Bowlin, Riverfront Park, Riverfront Park.
Yes, I do think that we need to take some precautions to ensure the safety of our citizens and those tourists that are coming by and venture to Riverfront Park. So like, I don't know how much it would cost to get a fence put up there. I have no idea. In fact, I'm not surprised we haven't done it already.
Do you know?
A little disheartening, but hasn't. Yeah, I'm sure there's people we'd call. I just would.
Do you know, Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yeah. Friday, we're going to have Goodwood, Goodwood Mills and Kewood here. And we're gonna have this, and I hope everybody will come. In fact, I hope as many council people can come.
Yes, ma'am.
Cam will come at one o'clock. And I'm glad that I had the opportunity to explain this. We're going to have the Goodwood Mills and Kewood representatives here as well as Naby Gordon from USDA. I was able to see Michael Mills, who used to be with the Delta Regional. In fact, he gave the Archer by, he was able to help get Archer by their startup money and get the bar rolling over there. He is now the stake director of the E D A for Alabama. He will be here. And John Ty Rigs, the Todd D. B. Regional will be here. And so we've got not only the, probably the state's best engineer in front is gonna be here to help get some stuff going, you know, to talk to us about some stuff, but also three funding strength folks that are gonna help us with the way of funding. Because one of the things I learned last week was that, was that, um, um, a lot of infrastructure money is coming down. And so they're gonna help us access a lot of that. And, but the reason I'm bringing this in is called, we can help get emergency stuff back to.
Well, we just need to get something on that as soon as possible before somebody falls on there.
They can help us because going through the local stuff, I've got local stuff from ten years ago that's still being used. So we can bring that up in front. That will ride over there with me.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I just, not rocket science, just a fence. But yeah, I was hoping to.
We ought to find a local person that can do that stuff that's not rocket science and bring us in up to now.
Well, my thought was to reach out to some of the contractors the city had used in the past in different locations and that normally they have chain link fence and posts that they. that they use on their own job sites to secure the area, and my thought was to try to strike a deal with them to get some assistance that way, which I'd spent money on it, that's where I was starting from. But again, I, you know, I'm happy to discuss it with them, I was just trying to find out if we can do this with little or no cost to the city.
I can't even get a local person to do something for pay, for me, and I've got a street that's fixing to fall, that old looking road, like, like Oak Street.
It's very difficult, very difficult.
Literally, not to mention my backyard.
I, I, I know, I've had a hard time.
That right came and looked at.
A hard time securing.
My backyard is.
A, uh, I've been in two.
I've got, I've got a street over on Wilkins, people go every day, that a mom in a car full of kids in a minivan is gonna fall into.
I have the same, same problem with my table, so.
That whole island, I noticed when I was down there, there's, there's, there's some curly steps coming down, there's nothing underneath the steps, huh?
It's gone.
So, in other words, anybody walking.
You have to go down.
The thing, the stairway.
That's what.
And that's why, that's why.
We're getting crime scene type.
Well, that's why, well, again, I don't think.
See, can you get somebody?
I will, because the citizens have blown through crime tape, they've blown through the orange fence that we put down there, they've blown through the barricades, throw those on the ground and step over them, so we have to get something substantial enough, six foot tall, a chain link fence or something, just to say, look, do not get in this hole, you know, because they go like, I'll climb over and get in there, you know, you can't stop them.
Why don't you get Goodwin Mills to ride over there and go?
Well, I, I've actually been talking to Civil Southeast, so Civil Southeast will wear it, and Civil Southeast has been helpful enough to review it, I guess, last week with Henry, and, uh, and as we move forward in the other endeavors, because Civil Southeast is helping out with the drainage issue in Wardwood, so, yeah.
I hope they're soon gonna be able to start a other building.
I hope so, as long as we get that audit back, we can get to work, so, as soon as we get them out, so, hopefully we'll have that back soon.
Why are you looking at them?
Well, because you're the accountant in the city, so I figured you know when it's coming in, so.
Yeah, but she was asking them to send it back.
Right.
She's saying, please.
Kind of scanning across the room, looking at everybody in the room, I don't know who's actually in control of getting that thing back, I would think you actually have the purse strings on getting that thing back, but I'd like to get it back.
Well, I mean.
It's not you, it's the mayor's office, or.
Yeah, I asked before with the mayor, um, sign and I'll follow.
I just know we can't move forward with the, with the Barrett Road drainage project until such times we get that back.
All right, any other business, Arden?
No, we aren't.
I'm game.
Hang on, wait.
Okay, we have a meeting, Councilwoman Youngblood, Councilwoman.
One o'clock Friday.
Five o'clock tomorrow, publicly.
One o'clock Friday.
And, and they want to discuss that, and Mr. Judge, and some other things, the lights too, Ms. Ms.
Could your committee, Ms. President?
The lights also, too.
Could your committee address those?
Any lights?
Those, uh, weapons that has been reported to, not to, to turn.
He's saying, he's saying.
Okay, okay, yeah, well, yeah, because I know I went to my government, I had some person with myself.
There's, there's, there's a thinking that there's still some, some weaponry that has not been accounted for.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we can discuss, I could, I also invite the fire chief and the chief of.
We need to talk to somebody in the trailer about that.
I need some lights, I want that light.
That's the friend of the relationship is going.
If it's true, if it's true, and I truly believe it, yeah, we need to get those weapons back in our position.
Yes, best.